The city of Atlanta. I wrote down my story, I'm not wrong, it could be stupid trash, that's a city of central Florida and this is the town of there. I think I have a little bit of all. This guy is very, he was very, very smart. It keeps it.
In the theater, are you worried?
Yes.
You were. As if you were both forty three, three minutes in, you're gonna call, moving for time, passing the order. If you will, our rise and what we would.
Well, then. Who's along and I mean, I was saying to them. You do the law, which stands for a mission, other of, in the end, so, whether it's we, uh, from.
Mayor King. But just. That's, 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 I was just gonna ask you. Yeah, it's not good. Yeah, it's making. There, there are, I, I, I. We're open in, we have a public comment tonight, we have, we heard the team, Randy Pete, and Kim Watkins said that, or. Give it to me. An address to the.
Nora Brothey, four twenty six, nine hundred and three. So, here tonight, we're at Parks and Recreation, and we've got a couple items on the agenda, so we have two committee members coming on, which is great news. One of them, I understand, is an event planner, so. Very good news. Um. The other thing is the firm with boat grand founders, so Lisha Noah came to our meeting, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and said that they were out for a, um, I guess they were watching fireworks, and they got in after eight o'clock, I think, is when that cuts off, and they couldn't get in, they couldn't get their boat in. We should get out. No, they couldn't get in, they couldn't get back in, they were out in the lake, and they got back after eight o'clock, and the, the rent is closed, and they couldn't get their boat in. They couldn't get in, like, Lisha got out and, I mean, climbed underneath the fence or something, so. Um, so she came to ask us about maybe increasing the hours there for residents. And, you know, now that the fences are off, and that seems to have really alleviated the problem of all these people coming there and trying to go to Bird Island. Uh, maybe we could, um, expand the hours for residents a bit, people who already have boat passengers. So they could leave early in the morning if they wanna go out fishing, five o'clock in the morning, um, or make sure that they're watching fireworks and they don't get back until nine thirty, that they can still get their boat in. The third thing I have is one along the lakes, which is gonna be October fourteenth. Um, we are exactly even with last year, so last year we had a thousand nineteen runners. So we expect that again this year, so probably around thirty-five hundred people or so total. Um. We did send a public invitation to, um, all the town employees, Public Works Police Department, Town Avenue, with a coupon code, so if anybody would like to sign up for the race, uh, with your family, you're welcome to. We'd like to see you there. Um. The other thing, we're starting working on some additional parking, event parking, kinda, it's not a suggestion, it would be great if the town could come up with an event parking plan. So each event manager would have to sort of scramble around, start to figure out where they're gonna put all these people. So the town would sort of put, but this is, you know, especially that, our case, and we would, um, we would just know where it is. That would be great. Um. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Steve. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Uh, Brad, your name is three five, Earth Street, uh, actually, I am just here, uh, for myself, on behalf of the neighbors in mind, and we're good, wanting to know what the status update is on the design for the, the murder at Oakville night, 'cause nobody's started anything for a couple of months.
Yeah, we're ordering a survey drought in the area because we're gonna have to have a sleeve for the water line, we wanna get the elevations correct, so we've got a survey company coming in to give us that. We're doing part of the project in-house with my staff, and then some of the rest of it with a contractor, so we just wanna make sure we have the elevations correct, so we're getting a survey.
I'm Kim Watkins, Ed, it's on Main Street, and I'm here for the firm event. I think it should be open twenty-four seven.
Can you slide that for me?
The hours of burnwood, I believe, should be open twenty-four hours a day, that's the whole reason our handway waterhouse, the whole reason we live in here, and. Live here, and weren't that any time cut off, it's just not right. Some of you know we in the house full of babies, and we have been waiting for the kids to go to sleep, for grandma to go down, make some peace, and quiet at the dock. And since things lose hours, I don't have that, and it's been rough, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Even if you like that. Go ahead, say anything. Even address that you want.
Even later, something called me, sure. Uh, sorry, I missed, uh, if you could pick that up. Um, I'm talking about a town, I don't answer, I think, with that plan. And I know we haven't drawn a giant idea, but we had a garage and something back on. And I was wondering, if I'm leaving this spot, the political force, that grade, so we don't have all these ramps being up in back of this building. Right now, we're talking about the ramping of the left and right, that side. And I'm not sure what the garage rooms are really doing, but I know that if we put those on the grid, we wouldn't have those ramps within this building, the backside. You know, I understand that I'm of a view of, of course, but I agree, but it's just an idea, I'm playing with it, thought I'd throw it out for you, consideration. Thank you.
Uh, I, I, I'm sorry, I had a little trouble hearing you, Stephen, that was grand.
Well, if, if the space thing was dedicated to the project, well, actually, the torch, you know, on the ground. You would be able to roll right in, have a good, that exception. Right now, we're having the plans, those, scanning these boards, which are at this grade, which means you gotta have a ramp coming in from both sides.
Good.
And, uh, that just seems like, I mean, the trusty amount of ramps in that area, and I know we'd wind up hitting a, a back porch, related to that side is a great idea. But I was just playing my mind, and. You would not need a garage, or you might be public force at grade, so we're, we'll try to adjust.
Thank you, sir. Right, and this time, we see anything of, uh, public hearing, time items, those are really, um, be in six oh eight, and open another public hearing at six oh eight, you know? This is the resolution twenty twenty-three, uh, that zero five, the non-accident, the second goal for street lights, the willows at, uh, Lake Rio, phases one, two, and three. Let me do a little reading here. Resolution twenty twenty-three, that is, here, reports the public hearing to improve the non-accident, assess the role for the town to cover the increase in possible street lights for phases one, two, and three, of the willows at eight three. As background, each resident in the willows is paying one hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy cents a year to cover the cost of the streetlights, due to energy, has increased those costs. On the next tax bill, each resident will be required to pay one hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-two cents, which is an increase of the thirty dollars and four cents. Um, we will have, uh, opportunity here in just a moment to, um, have any public comment or testimony from all issues of persons. And Dorothy, um, will you read any written objections or comments regarding the session set?
I have one from Holly Pratt. Do you think we received a notice of assessment and is not clear what you are doing? The letter says an increase in fence, that the total amount to level levy is one sixteen eighty-two, which is equal to the current assessment. Are you intending to double it? Your notice is not clear, please let me know, thank you, I did require her and let her know what the assessment was for, and the amount, if I'm gonna double it. The other one is from Janice Dugan. I received a notice about the proposed assessment, that the town council wants to affect the revenue for the willows for maintaining the streetlights. I want to go on record, voicing my concern, if I felt like I was giving a tiny response and a solution to the problem I'm having in guarding the streetlight in front of my house, I would have no problem paying the assessment. I did forward this email to everybody from August twenty-ninth, and it's a long email in regards to the lifeboat found for home, which I believe has been addressed, so. I will include this as part of the minutes as well, if not much you wanna hear from it.
That's okay, but, but, well, do you feel like we've got it worked out in the same houses you did here, I heard you.
Follow up.
Thank you.
All right.
At this point, I'll open up the podium for any public comment on this, uh, resolution twenty-three dash zero five. See, uh, we will close the public hearing at six eleven, and reopen our meeting, town council meeting. Council, in driving under your business, you have, I believe, seven, yes, seven sets of meetings, council, and, and, I believe, mayor. But I do, no votes, we need to vote on the rest. Hey, I'm gonna need that pool, I'm gonna need that pool to the outside.
Anyone?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
All right. So, each. That is second, council person, council, any comments or concerns on this resolution one, one three dash ten five. See, none, we'll begin voting with councilperson three. All right. Uh.
Aye.
Five.
Aye.
Thank you, council, and thank you, staff, and, sure. You know, I did all that reading so well, just like you asked. Just a little. Council, your duty is again, seven, meeting, uh, agenda items, or approval, send agenda, you can, uh, you can pass all of these as one, or you can pass for, uh, one, two, all of you, ultimately, and then it's a chance. Eric, maybe we can do a group, what's, that, it's, it's a minute. That in motion, to approve all the councilperson, yeah, that's, I think, the councilperson, hey, council, any questions, comments, or concerns, any of these meetings? See, none, we can go to council, councilwoman Rose.
Aye.
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 Uh, aye. Very nice, help me to, that's if you can. Next up is a content item, the interlocal agreement between the city of the public and the town, for the city of the public firearms, read. Um, staff, regulations, approval, is there any presentation on this tonight, Crowder?
No, um, we typically use, uh, the Govee's, uh, firearm range for this construction, out of the, kind of, the revamp, but it really wasn't the best firearm range. Um, I think Tom probably tested that, um, but a pocket has everything that we need, and it's very adequate for what we need for it, so.
Alright, sounds good. Council, I'm looking for a motion. What you agree, councilperson, is that, is that, is that, is that person that it? Yes.
It's not possible.
None.
Very generous. Any additional comments or concerns, passes? See, none, we'll begin the way of councilperson three. I, I, which means the next, then, item, need passes, you know?
Just three.
Okay. Next up is the first reading, uh, ordinance, first meeting, three dash zero four. Do you do, are you here for this as well, or are we next, do you prefer to hear any other hearing next time?
Just first reading.
Okay. So for first reading, see, next, or next, number twenty-two, three dash zero four, the United City of Town in the near Florida, change the operation of golf carts, public race streets in the town. Providing findings, amending Article Three in Chapter Twenty of the Town School of Ordinance, citizens, golf carts, by requiring that a person operating in golf cart and designated town roads, four streets, possess a valid learner's driver license. Or valid driver's license, providing for separability, complication, and effectiveness. We will, I'm sorry. Sure, absolutely.
So, can we, is, is a dirt road considered sidewalk?
I would say no, let's, let's drive away, um. Typically, when you have a golf cart ordinance, the town has the right to dedicate certain sidewalks, like a motor path, as a golf cart path.
It's nice, right now, we don't really have. Pass.
No.
So. How old do you have to be, I don't know, I'm sorry, I'm a year of. Fifteen with a, okay, many of you are eighteen, and you don't have a license, like, in the climate.
I was told by, I'm sorry, I'm interrupted, I was told by assistant chief or, I think, chief, on, that today you do not have that a driver's license, so.
That's the way I heard.
Yeah, he actually made a fire today, he's, Dorothy, and it's very detailed.
Over eighteen, correct, but not just fifteen, that'd be, uh, yes, you need a driver's license, whatever that, sorry. But if we need to add anything, you know, that is your road, there, from, we'd be able to. Maybe.
It's, uh. We're still having.
We, we could, if you can make some words, like, a road is when you see the cars, and that's where a road is, whether it's serving or not. But we're not even riding on the road yet.
There, yeah, we were just matching Florida statute with this amendment, um, to make sure that we're in compliance with, uh, Florida statute. But, yeah, it's, we can get more strict if we want to, but it's.
We wanna understand.
Yeah, if you drive on a dirt road, yeah.
Well. Cause the way this is written out, I thought, I was my knowledge, most, I just.
No, if, if, if they're in a golf cart operating on a public driveway or sidewalk, then they have to be fifteen years of age, um, and have a learner's permit or driver's license, and eighteen, and up, they don't have to have them.
And that's whether they're on sidewalks, or motor path, or a year.
Um, I would say that's anything that is dedicated for golf cart use.
This doesn't change the previous statute, the. Outline that all are allowed.
No, it doesn't change.
That's, that's, council, you know, I know there's sort of a race, but, um, she's not allowed at all. She goes, uh, modify that.
Right, but not even allowed on the east street, because the speed limit.
You, yeah, so this is basically just bringing some compliance in line with the state statute.
They seem to like the changes one every year. And the problem was that you had, is, we had specific statement that said, you, if you were reporting, you could drive it on a designated road or the sidewalk, and.
Great.
No more on the road, so that's how we fix it. Okay. Yeah.
Any additional?
Yeah, we need that six months ago. Correct.
Any additional comments, uh, or concerns, you know, regarding this? Second, and here, at our next townhouse, sorry, sir.
Welcome to that, in golf cart, I'm right now, looking from the Floyd's Park of Highway. Golf carts may be operated on roadways that are dedicated for golf carts with the most speed of thirty-five per hour for that, in that course, well. F, F O H S M D. Uh, golf carts may also cross border tally road, which intersects the roadway that approved for golf carts, or that intersects the golf course, or both, both car.
Quick, quick, your name, you, sir, yeah. You, you're, you're free to name out the comment, if you'd like to do so, just let me know that, I need you to do that at, in my person, and I need your name and your address, so the, I think. No doubt, thank you.
And so, every word, too, um, is down, and does donate a bunch of work to the town, um, every time we have a emergency or emergency, he's there for us.
Yeah.
Every certification that's known, and relatives to emergency services, uh, so we do appreciate the services now.
Thank you, Robert, um, and Robert, I'm going to have to talk about, about here at the meeting for you guys, that we have, to give you guys more to major about volunteers, and how they can affect the town, and to take more money to the town. But when it comes down to golf carts, one, the most, I've come about one, I'm around very few, I think, five feet, I got three, two, six, nine, I can do, that was for Florida, that's for California. Uh, when it comes down to golf carts, one, when it comes down to the roads, they've got to be marked, that's according to, that's according to the, uh, Florida, the Florida Highway Safety, by vehicles. They, everything in this, divided second, thirty, three twenty, point zero one. Presently, point two, and the broad statutes. So if you need help with that golf cart, yeah, that's where it is, and for the tavern, thirty, three twenty, point zero one. So, and one thing, when it comes down to golf carts, very important, I've actually seen. People driving without any headlights at all, or brake lights, while they're driving in dark. If you remember the chief of police and keeper who just got fired, yes, she was fired, definitely was fired, so, I think. But her, her, her problem was, she, one, she was not riding on the roadway, like, she was, but, but, and she did not have that. You've got to make sure that your lights are on golf carts. But everything about second, three point, point zero one, and put a statute for golf carts, if you need any more information about golf carts, in that way, you can stay with the law and statutes.
Thanks, sir, much appreciated.
Did, did we get his name for the worker?
Yes.
Uh.
Draw that one.
Say it one more time.
Draw, the eight, eight.
Charles.
Last one, oh, it's, yeah, the picture, A, B. Yeah, so, if you, so if I were a golf cart, I mean, wait a minute, I don't have that.
Yeah, again, Charles is a good person, and I appreciate all the work that he's done for us.
Excellent.
Yeah, if I found with a lab, if you might go after the meeting, meeting, uh, I can go, I heard, I have to say, with a, a couple of money, I'm good about here.
Thank you.
There's one correction on the appointments for Parks and Recreation Committee, yes, the block, yes, um, is doing strategy, and probably on the, uh, total, kind of.
Do we need to? Do we need to do anything to the agenda?
No, just, 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 just monitor all your stuff, or, uh, I have this one.
Next up is item D, these are appointments for Parks and Recreation Committee, Tracy McLaughlin and Stephen Dovino. Uh, Parks and Recreation recommends of, of both of these, um, individuals for committee service, looking for a motion to approve, council?
Motion.
Motion to approve both, fair enough.
Yes, no, I'm sorry. Second.
Okay, uh, councilperson David, and second, councilperson Rose, council, any further comments or questions on these two appointments? See, none, begin voting, councilperson Rose. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
And one, here is the end, the seat, item two, is the Lindemere Tree Board, where we have three individuals, um, Miss Jill and Folia, Vicki Hurst, and Bonnie Dakota. Okay, and the tree board recommends all three of these individuals, looking for a motion to approve all three? Question, approve all three, councilperson Depp.
Aye.
Second, councilperson David, right? Any questions, comments that have been, sir? The amendment, begin voting, council. Aye.
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 Item two, Lindemere Tree Board, um, committee members, regents, next up, there's contracts, low level safety lighting on a parking lot at West Fifth Avenue. Uh, staff regulations, uh, approval, and selection of the complete service electric. Fire, you know, just, it's a quick, a quick rundown?
Yes, absolutely, we did hold a public workshop on this, and, uh, Councilman Williams was on it, and one other resident, she didn't have any issues with the, um, low level lighting, because it's so low level. That, um, that parking lot is surrounded by fencing and hedge, so you've got kind of a double barrier there, and it's very, it's only fifty-two inches, so it won't be above that fencing or above that hedge. And we've had some complaints about how dark it is when we have evening events such as wine and dine and things like that, so it was brought to our attention, so we went ahead and looked at what we could do there to help with that situation. So we are asking for approval to move this forward, because in addition, Wine and Dine asked us to upgrade some of the electrical at the same time we're doing this for their event and for their orchestra event, so. I'd like to be able to move forward and get the vendor working, because, uh, materials and supplies are really in high demand, it's hard to get them, and the lead times are long, so we're trying to make sure we can get this in in time for their events as well.
And here, like, when you're wanting on, sending those additional improvements.
Yes.
Down there, it is.
Yes, sir.
That's basically clear on that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, council, will you for a motion to approve? Will you, for a motion to approve, councilperson Depp?
Second.
Second, councilperson Rose, quick question, yes, so just for clarity, I'm gonna, the ballards, like, we. Side of them.
Yes, that's the area where we were, um, hearing complaints about how dark it is, and at the public meeting, we said, as we move forward, if it, it looks like we still need some extra, we can always do that, but now we're set up with the infrastructure to do that more easily.
Yeah. Will they do, like, they do, like, a lighting study or anything?
John looked at the assessment, and it's not putting out enough light to even, and even more than.
Yeah, it's pretty dark.
It's exactly the same as the ballards we have in the administrative complex, so if anyone's interested, you can always go there at night to see how much light that's putting out, but it won't be any more light than you would put out in your own landscaping, in your own garden, around the path base, in your own backyard.
There is, yeah, they, now, the east side also backs up all, it was, yeah, for this, from all residential side, so, I mean, this is back in. Is that my sister, who, you know, with other, that's, it, be, before it on me?
No, I don't think, no. And we noticed, we noticed within five hundred feet, we noticed within five hundred feet of the site, and only one resident got on, and she thought she was talking about the pavilion, so.
Must be taking a couple of, please. We might need to, it's fast. All right, any additional, uh, questions? If not, um, besides my comment being a, I moved her distance to gold, um, we will begin voting with, uh, councilperson Rose.
Aye.
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 Thank you, council, that item, under contract, low level safety lighting, that's, you mean, this.
Thank you.
Next up, I did, uh, we have a couple discussions. We, we received some comments and, uh, turns about a couple items here, one is the discussion relative to the burn, uh, boat grand founders, you know, that this is an area that is not parked, so it has, um, you do have the ability, fully change the hours in parts as well, that you can do independently, for a minute, that you wouldn't have to, then, carry through the whole. Um, I, I think that, from, um, from a voting perspective, well, two things on this, I know that we truly want to make sure that this slope, and I mean, make sure that we get, it's, um, that it is working. Um, and also now, we have the modifications that the island, hoping they're making some differences, definitely, all the feedback that I get is, with the exception of a couple of the hours, all the feedback I get has been super positive. I did talk to Tommy about this a little bit, she mentioned that we may need some light there, if we're making extended hours. So, we, we may want to consider that. In our discussion as well, so, I'll just, another, conversation.
So if you're going to do lighting, is that lighting, would that have to be on, first, I don't know, if we were to go that route? Because, well, I guess not very vague, but I mean, any time it's dark, like, first thing in the morning, and.
It would, if it's dark, it would have to be on.
But then we need your license, you know, that, of, of.
I did, I did talk to the general, he is okay with it opening up earlier, just not opening up later, and he is adjacent to the south of the firm, with, with.
We, well, what is the requirement? There. I, I can say this, that residents of the, of, you probably, and have taken votes in that, like. Let somebody down there just hanging on, parking lot, me texting, I, some workers are avoiding the lighting. I talked to other residents down there also, and I said the same thing.
It's more, uh, more of a liability. Well, I don't want to say anything, but I'd like to, to vote in that. Uh, it, it may be, I'm not, I'm not, I wouldn't, I wouldn't dispute that, I just don't know that. Pardon?
We want to sit down there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, I, I mean, the whole thing with. So typically, well, ramps are open, a little additional hours, uh, at the very least, just because of the nature of. So typically, well, ramps are open a little additional hours, uh, at the very least, just because of the nature of what we do, right? So if you want to go out early with it, if you want to come home after fireworks. You know, and I don't think it needs to open twenty four hours a day or anything, but you may want to add a couple hours in the fence. See how that goes, it's not, if we have a problem, we can just retract the hours. That's the beauty of the system that it can solve there, is you can, you can modify that. Um, we need to modify this for, you, you know, different holidays and things like that, that would be cool to be out with. I don't know. I, the only person I've heard ask about this has been, uh, the Millers and tonight has said, so. But I do know that. That boat ramps are going to be open. And that's my opinion.
I would, yeah. We have the, the fencing up now, I'm sure we should build it, access to it at all. You know, other than thinking they have one, try not to us to, to dominate and people, and they worry the limits and. We would possibly.